Okay.
Alright.
So you know.
You know what you wrote the Democrat law here when you voted for it, you won that that barred gender transition for minors. And we know that Congress running may think so because of the human right for kids to be mutilated and their fertility destroyed with this so-called gender-affirming care. The theory ended up losing her primary most likely because of that vote she made. And now she's crossed to the other side of the Republican Party, Texas Day Rep, John Perry joins me now. The tipping point to the.
He's trying, okay, so he's doing something now.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good evening, everyone, it's seven o'clock, so we're gonna go ahead and start. Please, if you have cell phones with them and some factors silent or vibrating both, so they won't make disruptions. If you can all join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Alright, Allison is not here tonight, so our deputy partner will do the roll call.
Ashley Richard.
Here.
Natalie Schumaker.
Here.
Kevin Kelly.
Here.
Phil Morris. Phil Morris. Lynn Norris.
Here.
Joe Boy.
Here.
April.
Here. Phil is trying to do a vote attendance, so we'll see if he can get hooked up. I believe that's him off the side, just hasn't gotten everything squared away yet, so. First item of business is the consent agenda. It's the minutes from our last open session meeting, the minutes from our last closed session meeting. And the, that was on August sixth, and then the financial statements and payment of the bills. Anybody have any questions on the minutes or payment of the bills?
You're just insulting my intelligence. Our kids were murdered because of your administration, so I guess that means that we should step down and come along.
What a shame.
Okay.
Probably have a way of muting.
I just did.
Okay.
They wouldn't let me really visit town.
Okay, so let it know where you sit.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve consent agenda. I'd like a motion to approve it, do we have a second?
A second.
Any final questions or discussions? Uh, no, roll call votes.
Natalie Rich, or Ashley Richard. Natalie Schumaker. Kevin Kelly. Phil Morris. Lynn Norris.
Yeah.
Joe Boy.
Yes.
Alright, next item on the agenda is the citizen period, there is a five-minute time limit, we have one person sign up. Susan Hospital Horn, Susan.
Hi, I'm Susan Hospital Horn, and I'm part of the Trumpet Treat Committee, and back again this year to request a donation if possible from the city to help fund the project. So what it is, on October twenty-sixth, we have the Trumpet Treat, it's in the parking lot at the Methodist Church. Where we have different organizations from in town set up trunks, and then the kids, we encourage ages two to fifth grade to come in costume and they can go through the trucks. We also will have a photo booth this year as a new activity. We have a witches' brew stand, for last year we had donuts and apple cider. This year we're shooting for some caramel popcorn or making an apple slushy, which is not the pricing on that, and it's part of the donation request. We also try, we also have a cemetery walk. Trying to throw a few other activities in, but this is our fifth year doing this, and so asking for funds to help make sure that we are standing for all of the trucks. Pay for the food at the witches' brew stand, and then we need to add a few more signs, so they add to our sign collection. And then fix a couple of the grave hoppers that make it all the way through the, to the event. If possible, we would like to request famous lectures donation, if possible, two hundred and fifty dollars. Happy to answer any questions about the event.
I think we have questions, but I personally want to thank you and the group that puts this together every year, it's been an excellent Halloween activity. All attended by the community and well appreciated by everyone that attends and all working for us, thank you. And I think we have to do the motion later on, the citizen period is done, so kind of falls under par, so when we get to you, do you do that motion? Sorry? That's a good question.
Yes, I'd say approval, and I'll put it officially out.
Yeah.
Will that be, my other question is if we are voting until beginning of October, will that be enough to get that money that you need to plan?
When does the event?
October twenty-sixth.
Prove it is beginning, a lot of those are ready to check then, will that be in a good time?
Yeah, yeah, if, if this is a tentative, yes, so we can discuss it, please, guys, this evening.
So she's the only person that signed up, so the citizen period is closed. Next on the agenda is reports from me. Before we get into my detailed reports, I want to get squared away on the CBA members. We have two current members, but their terms are expiring, and we need to nominate them or elect them. Swearing in Richard who's here tonight, and then the other member who's not here tonight. Brad Peterson and Andy Patton will have been voted in, they will need to be sworn in at some point in time, probably before the CBA meeting. So. Does anybody want to make a motion to have Richard and Brad be members of the CBA?
I motion for Brad and Richard to be members of the CBA.
Okay, we have any second, sorry, have any discussion? Not, uh, roll call vote?
Matt, I'm sorry. They have the shoe maker. Ashley Richard.
Yeah.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Lynn Norris.
Yeah.
Joe Boy.
Yes.
Phil, can you hear us? We can't hear you, so.
Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Did you vote on that, Phil?
Yeah, I said yes.
I want to make sure we get it right, okay, thank you, Phil.
Yes.
I would like to go ahead and ask Carol, who's swearing in, Richard then for the CBA position.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Richard, bye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of zoning board of a field's member.
Duty of zoning board of a field's member.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Congratulations, thank you, Richard. Excellent active member for a lot of years on the CBA, and we appreciate you continuing to serve on it. And I believe we are going to be heading up the CBA, so we really thank you for that too, so thank you. Has there been a date set for the CBA meetings coming up?
There hasn't been that.
When that gets set, we'll have to get Carol or Allison there to.
Yeah, yeah, soon I know something, I'll give you, Sarah.
Okay. Alright, next on my agenda is sewer study status, we have sent all paperwork to the state. Sarah got the last of it in last week, are we still waiting for the ten thousand dollar?
Yeah, once we get the check that we want more form that I have to fill out and sign, just stating that it's all done and taken care of, and then we are completely done with it.
Okay, so I envision that will be coming within a week with the.
Maybe.
Uh, maybe longer.
Yeah. It's a state, so we'll see.
Sometime this month though, I think we'll get that second check, so. That'll be done, I'm still working on the letters to the government requesting financing, so I should have draft of that ready for review by the end of the month. Okay, we have, and this would be under Phil's, but Phil isn't here, so we have been working with Jim Gildersley to set up the first right of refusal for lots thirty-one and thirty-two. And for a agreement on using lots thirty-one and thirty-two for storage. Those I sent last week to everyone for you to review, they're pretty straightforward. Grab's office has reviewed them and located them. And did anybody have any questions thought of? If not, can we have a motion to approve the ordinance for the first right of refusals and for the use of the land on lots thirty-one and thirty-two?
We have a motion to approve the first right of refusal ordinance and the land use for lot thirty-two.
Thirty-one and thirty-two.
Thirty-one and thirty-two.
They have a second.
They're both ordinances, right, there's two separate ordinances.
Charlie, you have the ordinance.
I'll second that, Dave.
Okay, Phil second, do we have any final questions or discussions? If not, roll call vote?
Natalie Schumaker. Ashley Richard.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Lynn Norris.
Yeah.
Joe Boy.
Yes.
Alright, your motion carries, so votes will be signed and forwarded. Get put in the appropriate channels. Just a reminder to the board, the planning commission meeting is September twenty-sixth, so anybody that would like to attend is welcome to attend. Starts at seven o'clock here at the police building. A month ago, I asked about ball field lights, what the cost would be running, and Sarah and Danny had worked on it, they figured to run the ball field, the lights cost about five dollars an hour per field. So if we want to turn on the lights on a Sunday night, to let whoever wants to come up there and play, if we do it on one field for a couple hours, it's ten bucks, if we do it on both fields, it's twenty bucks. So it's not a major expense, and it might be something to really look at for next summer. Would you, an adult, go up and coordinate it?
My only, my only thought on that was considering the problems we have with people in the park, and right now the order, or the sign ordinance also says the park closes at dusk or whenever the ten, like when it's dark, right? And so in the summer, it doesn't get dark until like almost nine, so I think we, I think it's a good opportunity to look at it, but I'm just wondering the logistics of are we gonna have them on, are we gonna say we'll stay open later? All that seems kind of contradictory to what we've been trying to do, which was to get them out of the park by ten o'clock.
I think the original thought was to have them on until ten.
Okay.
But you would turn them, I mean, yeah, they're technically.
Sure, but you need them on a little earlier.
But it would play a little bit.
Okay.
Earlier, if they were on, earlier, later, whatever.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
There used to be open softball on Sunday nights, adult, any adult that wanted to, you could come up and play, you could do the same thing for kids. Adults on one field, kids on another, you could do a lot of things.
Okay.
And if it bongs, you know, nobody shows up, then we won't.
Before you go to bed, I'm gonna save you down to where you. Okay. Okay.
You know, catch that, that was talking to Phil. So consider that for next, next year. At last meeting, I mentioned that I had met with Kwanzaa and Karla about providing possible police services for them. That has been pending based on staffing for our, our police. It may come up again next year, we'll see what kind of shape we're in in six months or a year from now, so. B N E D C is Bloomington Normal Economic Development Council. They are having a fundraiser to try and generate additional funds. Their primary income is from McLean County, Bloomington and Normal, and then there are also other businesses that contribute in other municipalities that contribute. We've been contributing three hundred a year, I think, until last year, and then we went up to five hundred. So the, the things they have done, they've been involved with recruiting Rivian to McLean County, they've been involved with getting brand farm equipment to McLean County. Carrero, I didn't pronounce that right, but they have been involved with helping recruit several major employers to Bloomington Normal area. So I don't know that they have directly helped small communities, but they have helped us by having excellent job markets. So we know there are people, neighbors, that work at Rivian or Carrero or the, the brand. So we do have residents that are employed, so I think, you know, they've done a lot of good things. My opinion at this time is that I would not recommend to the board that we increase our donation at this time. Again, I, I don't see the benefit how to spend jobs, and has helped that, but I, I think that my recommendation is just to continue to contribute what we have been contributing at this time. So, did anybody, Kevin had a question, and I wasn't able to get all the answers after I said that.
So, so, and I'm not sure if I read wrong my questions, but the, with the Bloomington Normal, with that, do they deserve? I mean, does Bloomington Normal fund that? I mean, I know they ask for donations from, from us, but do they, Bloomington Normal actually fund that, or is that like a state funding?
No, the state does not, Bloomington, Normal, McLean County are the primary taxing bodies that funded.
Okay.
Airport Authority.
Yeah.
And ISU and Heartland, I think, helped fund it.
Okay.
And then a lot of the major businesses in town also contribute, helped fund it.
Okay. So, so the airport authority, they actually contribute to that?
My understanding is they do.
Okay. And now that's the airport authority that, that were taxed, right, all that? So I think I would, the way that I would see it, is that since we're already taxed individually, we are contributing to their authority, they're contributing to that development.
Same thing with McLean County, I mean, we are paying taxes at McLean County, and that's.
Because, I mean, this is different, so like when we're talking about tip financing and bringing business to Hudson, do they bring it? They don't, like you said, they bring it indirectly to Hudson.
They bring it to the communities and to the county.
Yeah.
And then creates employment opportunities for our residents as well as McLean County and neighboring counties. They haven't done anything that I'm aware of directly to benefit Hudson.
Yeah.
So if anybody wants to raise the amount, it's a good time to mention it, otherwise we'll plan on leaving it as it is. Okay, attended a mayor's association meeting last week, and I want to cover some of the notes from that. Northern Illinois Gas was there, gave a presentation on the state's plan to get to net zero emissions. Bottom line was, the state is legislating a lot of things that technically are not ready for. We don't have the alternative energy sources yet to eliminate all the coal and natural gas and things like that, so. I have a flyer here, if anybody wants to look at it. I spent probably twenty minutes talking about it, so if anybody wants to look at it, it's here. It's another one of those deals where it's being legislated even though they know we don't have the technology today to get there. With the hopes that this will help spur technology, and we'll be able to get there by twenty fifty, or whenever the years are in the state planning, so. We also had discussions on a couple election petitions, there will be an election petition on our next election to eliminate the auditor's position. They currently have an internal auditor in the county, and we also, county has to pay for an external auditor, just like the village does. Most counties in Illinois do not have an internal auditor, I think there are about twenty counties that do. So there's gonna be a petition on their balance, on the ballot, to eliminate the McLean County auditor's position. They feel there should be some cost savings from that. And when the petition comes out, you have to vote yes to eliminate, so that'll be a couple months out, but that'll be on the ballot. There was also a request to put a petition on the ballot to create a memorial in Bloomington for Civil War veterans that got killed in the Civil War. Yeah, maybe on the ballot, but the mayors did not recommend that the petition be on the ballot, the many of the towns already have their own memorials, and they are financed by our town, not by McLean County. And so we feel that this memorial should have been financed by the neighborhood, that would give the memorial, or by the city of Bloomington, not by the entire McLean County tax base. So I don't know if that would be on the petition or not, but it's possible, so we did take action on that, and recommended that they not support it. And nobody's against a memorial for Civil War veterans, it's, I think it was Errol Smith, yeah, memorials already, they have two, one for a guy that was on the south, and one for a guy that was on the north, they're very, be a part of now cemetery, you know, so a lot of cemeteries already have it. Next thing I have, one other thing at the mayor's meeting, several of the other communities are passing a public camping ordinance to not allow public camping in their, on their properties. I sent the link of the I M L recommendation for an ordinance to Natalie, and asked her to work with the committee to take a look at that and see if that's something we feel we want to do. So if you're on the first committee, you'll probably hear from Natalie and that. Some of the towns are doing it, Pat isn't online, is he?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and feel free to contact Pat on that. Towns that were doing this revised what I M L sent, shortened quite a bit, so. Okay, the next thing I got is using tip money to purchase concrete blocks or bunker storage on the Gildersley property. I'll, I'll wait till we get to Lynn's section, and we'll bring it up under there when we have Lynn, so. So that's the end of my topics for tonight, next on the agenda is water, public property streets, zoning, Danny.
Two point eight million for the month, ninety-two thousand for the day, per day. I don't think I got well Sarah on the water loss.
I didn't have the bill yet to do it.
Yeah, okay, that would explain why we made a talk by. I am almost to the final leg or end of Shiner Street on the drainage over here, so just have a couple more sticks of pipe to put in, and that side will be done. As you guys heard about swearing in Richard for the CBA, we've got a variance on the table that hopefully we can get a meeting together. And get that recommended back to you guys for the October meeting. The International Dump Truck is over in Danville right now, getting a snow pile on it that we had budgeted. As you guys probably saw in the bills, the vac truck went down, had a repair on that, and Mark and I both prayed to the water gods and shed a little tear when that was gone. Because that's a major help and crutch that we rely on, so thankfully nothing bad happened while it was down. I had, just, just hearing Susan talk about the truck or treat, that, you know, I guess I'd like to, I just mentioned to her that, you know, we have the concession stand, and she said she was looking for popcorn and served things, I mean, I don't know, we have somebody that would be able to man that, but, you know, I was kind of mentioning to her that maybe she would be able to use that, but to get another benefit to the community out of using that, so. I think, I think maybe we could swing. The, the other thing, which I, I mentioned a little bit to Lynn and Phil, is with my part-time helpers, I remember when I was first hired here, and Frank had retired and was still here part-time, a little bit to help get me up to speed. I believe we were paying the part-timers at that time like maybe fifteen an hour, and I think it has basically stayed that for the last thirteen and a half years, so as, I don't think thirteen and a half years ago, you could go to McDonald's and make fifteen dollars an hour. And now I'm starting to run into a little bit of issues with you know, employees that I currently have, well, I can go do my second job for a better opportunity of a wage than I can here, it's so I, I think that's something we need to maybe evaluate. The, the skills that I ask and the jobs that I ask people to do when they are helping is a little more than welcome to Walmart. The, the last thing I have is, I have several personal things I need to attend to, so over the next couple weeks, I might be not around much in the afternoons, so just to let you know, that's all I have.
Thank you, Danny, does anybody have any questions for Danny? Danny, be prepared, I think we'll probably be asking you what you feel would be a good competitive wage, you know, in the next couple of weeks, so. Thank you. Good morning. Next on our list is Bill Marshall.
All right, everybody should have a copy of my report and if you can see at the top, those are your hard statistics that I always, uh, print out for you, so. If you have any questions about those, uh, let me know. You can see the meetings that I attended, um, the, uh, the clear talk, uh, meetings, so you understand that, that's tied in somewhat with E M A. It's going, it's a different vendor, it's a Motorola vendor and he's reviewing all of the, the sirens and the radios that are in all four sirens that we control here, that I control as E M A coordinator. We took two accident reports. Unfortunately, none of those were, uh, any major injuries. Um, mostly just damage to the vehicle and what it hit. We registered four golf cart permits, so we're up to forty-nine, so that's more than, than last year. So it's, it's again, a popular, popular thing to have. We did our stop sign details and our school bus details and of course our radar. As I kind of combined the E M A with my reports and, you know, kind of doing both, we did have the ten o'clock siren, we set it off and for the first time, I believe, in many years, all four sirens were. So free in time, one at Lake Bloomington, so we're really moving along with that. The next phase is to get to the point where the county can set it off and won't rely on the three radios that we just have, so hopefully we'll get to that pretty soon. Officer Lane gave a nice safety talk to the kids that smiley stay here during the, the month. You can see we took two criminal reports and then we continue with our extra patrol of the parks at night during the forces of the week. So our part-timer, Officer Lacy, she is usually here three nights a week. She covers it. When she doesn't, I'll go up and I'll make some rounds, uh, during the parks in the evening hours. And lastly, just another reminder to citizens, kids are back in school. We will be redoing our stop sign details in our school evening, uh, enforcement. Doing the streetlight report, it's actually less than last month because they did fix two of the streetlights. So you can see we only have five left on my list to be repaired, so. And lastly, if you came into the building, you might have noticed it looked a little bit different because they power washed it today, the painting crew and did a lot of scraping and everything, so it looks pretty rough right now because they're getting ready to paint it. Hopefully, they might have it done this week if, if the weather holds up. If not, it'll be done next week, but, uh, it'll be really nice. We've got the two-tone colors we picked out. So hopefully that'll get done very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Our agenda reports of change committees versus finance, budget, contracts, employees, Lynn.
Yeah, the only thing I have is going on days for, to, to discuss the village purchasing the concrete blocks for the bunker storage on the Golderslay property to let me just I believe we preliminarily discussed it during budget talks, um, as we were starting to use the property out there more. It is within TIF, it is TIF eligible, we can, we can, we can spend without having to vote on it. So I think we just want an, an additional general approval or discussion if I may have any questions for. Danny, what was the amount again for the blocks?
Um, we are gonna need approximately fifty-ish blocks and they're forty-five dollars a piece from a company in Bloomington, so that's only five hundred-ish.
Correct. We're just
Yeah.
In agreement. That's a good way to spend some funds, help that, go continue to do that.
Our group.
That sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so Danny, go ahead and order those blocks. Or Sarah, whichever it be yours. Okay, that's it, Lynn?
Yep, that's fine.
Phil, uh, glad to see you're joining us tonight. Hope you're late, hopefully your recovery's started and make some progress. Did you have anything for us tonight?
I don't have anything, Dave. Uh, my progress is doing pretty good on my foot. Um, I'll be off non-weight bearing for three months though, so I got a long road to hoe here.
Okay, okay, thank you, Phil. Anybody have any questions for Phil? Okay, uh, next on our agenda is ordinance and zoning, Ashley.
Danny had mentioned we have something coming up for a variance request, so hopefully we'll get that meeting set up and get something to you by, by October.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Ashley? Let's see, this police department, trustee Kevin.
Yeah, the only thing that we have, uh, we met, our police committee met right before this meeting today and we we discussed the transition of police chief and how Mark is gonna retire potentially intentionally in May or next year and uh, some kind of hiring process, what we're kind of looking at, what we're looking at. I haven't looked at data of what service calls to Hudson and kind of touch base on, um, scheduling type of things and security and, um, cameras at the park and I think he has some good ideas going there, so. So when the, when we finalize things and we get, um, these more concrete, then we can discuss it at the board. But it was, I think it was a good police committee meeting and I think I plan on doing one a couple of years. I think that's kind of a good thing, touch base on things, so that's all I have.
Any questions for Kevin? Water, Joe?
Uh, I remember, uh, Danny and Mark Meyer and, uh, probably Joe, I'm gonna come up with some, a write-up, you know, long-term plans of, uh, maybe some water mains to replace, like certain blocks that are small. Try to get like a loop around the town of six-inch main, but this is a long-term thing, planning, but, uh, I'll try to come up with that next month or something. Uh, and they sent out their cyber report. I'll, if anybody has any question about cyber stuff. Once everybody does the classes, they said they'd start sending out, you know, test emails to see if you click on stuff. And, you know, if you click on it, you're gonna get more training, so. But to generalize that with people, that's gonna happen. If you have email account, that's gonna happen, so we even happened though. We were gonna, we were gonna give zoning board people emails and stuff too, I think, so. Any, anybody that has an email account with us will get those. I, I think the laws, I, I don't think, I think the law always has to have employees, but it's a good idea to have everybody do it. They don't take that long, so.
So does that do a place to like all, and don't we have like planning commission and all the, so they, they get that as well?
They all, they all get it, yeah.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we legally would be required to make them that good, but, you know, we'd nice if people did it, so.
We have questions for Joe? Okay, before we get into the liquor commissioner, I do want to bring up, uh, an update on sales tax. We have talked about sales tax in the past. Uh, we have done nothing and the state of Illinois now has a, passed two laws or one law that we can do two different taxes. The grocery sales tax is disappearing at the end of twenty-five, I think it is, so we could pass our own tax for grocery sales if we wanted to replace that revenue, which was only a couple thousand a year, I think. But the big one they passed for us is that home rural and non-home rural communities can both pass sales tax by ordinance now instead of by a voter referendum. So if we wanted to create a sales tax for Hudson, I, I think we would want to have public meetings to let everybody know what we were looking at, how much revenue we would generate, how much we think it was costing visuals. And before we would pass it, but we could pass it on a board vote rather than a referendum. So everybody needs to think about that. The sales tax revenue we get now is what, ninety, a hundred thousand dollars a year roughly?
You can fix the money matter, I have to look it up for sure, but yeah.
That would roughly match what we get now in our sales tax if we adopted a one percent sales tax in Hudson. So it would be a major revenue boost for us, so. I think it was just over a hundred, maybe a hundred and ten or twenty.
Yeah, I'll have to look.
Okay.
I'm trying real quick, but I don't have it up to see.
So I, I was, I didn't do any action on it tonight, but I wanted to make sure everybody saw that in the I know newsletter and uh, other discussions they've had with Pat, so. Okay, does anybody have any other business for open session?
Probably with property.
Oh, I am sorry, Neil.
Um, I just wanted to share that I am working on creating a recommendation or some kind of, uh, outline for the possibility of taking on the ballpark or the ball programs. So I have a couple of different meetings I'm going to this week, um, trying to gather some information. So I'm hoping by next month, I feel, I'll share with people kind of what the cost of that would look like, the operations, all of that kind of information, um, to share. And then I want to make sure we talk about the donation for truck or treat. I know we have already agreed we're gonna do that, but, um, Danny brought up a good point about what other things we have, so the, the popcorn concession stand, is there other things that people can think of or that you guys know you might need help with that we can help with? A discussion about that.
Danny does a great job with the, um, P R rights and getting all of our on barricades, so they can set up and direct people work from the business department, so. All the little kids that are hyped up on Twitter, so.
Support, yeah, that's really important, all the support from the village. Okay, well, do you think of anything else? Let us know, then I can, uh, we could talk a little more about popcorn, but appreciate it, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I do this every so often and I skip a trustee, so I need to, so thank you, Ashley. Okay, uh, next is the liquor commissioner myself and I have nothing to report there, no activity. So our next item on the agenda is to move into closed session to do a six-month review of closed session minutes and a status on land acquisition. So do we have a motion to move into closed session?
Hey, Dave, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Dave? Um, if I'm not mistaken, I saw on the news where, uh, town of Normal was voting on that one percent grocery tax tonight as well, so we might look and see what they did on that and see what kind of money they're generating to compare to what we would generate.
Yeah, I think when it first was announced, the town of Normal and Bloomington were both looking at millions of dollars of lost revenue. And I think, Sarah, when you checked with the state and did our analysis, it was only
Pretty minimal, a couple of dollars.
A couple thousand dollars for us, actual food tax.
Yeah, I, I just threw that in. I, I just saw it on the news, so I thought I'd let you know. You might, you might be looking for it online to see what happened.
Watch and see what they do. Thanks, Bill.
Yep.
All right, do we have a motion to move to closed session?
I have motion that we move to closed session.
I'll say it. Okay, we have a motion, the second to move closed session, roll call, vote.
Ashley Richard?
Yes.
Natalie Schumaker?
Yeah.
Kevin Kelly?
Yes.
Phil Morris?
Yes.
Anora? Yeah.
Joe Lee?
Yes.
All right, our portion of our regular meeting is adjourned. I want to thank everyone who's coming. We'll be firing up in closed session here in a few minutes.
You said you do not leave Pat for closed session, right?
No.
Okay, so Pat.
Hi, guys.
You bet.
Big bet.
Double booked tonight and ran late, so apologize, I was late.
Pat, I do have a question for you. Can you still hear me? Email response for swearing in the Z B A members?
Yep.
We needed a notary public there.